So we'll call the meeting in order. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to certify the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome everybody tonight. Big crowd here tonight, which is great. Can't tell I was supposed to be Buddy the Elf, but we had some events going on tonight, so I figured I better not dress up like that. So, going, looking at the agenda here, we'll go ahead and we'll start with the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for the evening.
Second.
So a motion made in second to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. With that, also looking at the consent agenda, I believe that would fall under the same motion.
No, this would be a separate motion for this consent agenda.
Alright, so taking a look at this, we'll take a look at the consent agenda. If there's no discussion that needs to be had, we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Is the motion made in second to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Alright, so first item, truth and taxation hearing, final for 2023 levy. Is there a resolution on that, Dan?
This is just the public hearing component, so if there's anybody in the audience that wanna speak specifically to the city preparing their final levy budget tonight, now would be the time for anyone to come forward to speak at the truth and taxation. The state basically requires that we hold a public meeting, that it's at 6:00 PM or later, and we give the residents an opportunity to talk on the levy that'll be talked about in new business, item A.
Anybody wishing to come forward, or does anybody have anything to say they can, they can approach podium here? If not, we'll move ahead to our public comment. This portion is where we do allow any petitions, requests, or comments, communication from the general public. We ask them to come forward, state their name and their purpose, and also their address within the city here. We do remind everybody that there is a strict three-minute time limit that we would hold you to for anything that you have to address the council on. Anybody wishing to address the council can come forward? Kathy?
I don't know if you can debate with the letter that I sent.
Did not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, maybe you've seen the letter that I had written with pictures of our current sidewalk project that we had. So, in there, you will see a variety of holes, and the sidewalks are pitted up on the north end, and walking around the park in our aprons. So I'm gonna read my letter to you, so then, but you have a copy of it in your pocket. I didn't know how many of you are aware of the condition of our sidewalks and driveway or aprons along Pork and Park and Spores. There are many sections that have holes in them that range from small to at least one inch. Many are quite pitted. I admit my knowledge of concrete, so while the concrete is ready to be cemented, the holes should not be... And I do have the picture of the number of holes seem to have increased as I have been walking along through the fall, and much more pitted in a section by section, driveways and driveways, but there are rust spots showing up in various places along the way as well. I am very concerned about their condition. It is my thought that those holes, as they fill with water, as we continue to move through the seasons, then freeze, and in all likelihood become even more pronounced, and all of which will likely contribute to the concrete's overall disintegration. As homeowners and citizens have and are giving a great deal of money into this project, it is very unsettling to see how poor our sidewalks have already become. I'm hopeful that you will discuss this and find a way to rectify the situation. I would also hope that you would continue to inform each of our homeowners in writing with the service of the issue, just as you did in regards to our trees, how that was all going. Certainly, your ongoing... But I would also like to know, I see that an approval of final pay estimate for number 14, the 2023 project, is up for discussion. I don't know, I'm very concerned that we would pay them their final payment in light of what poor condition the sidewalks in and the holes. I'm not kidding, they're that big. So like I said, I don't know if any of you have been up there.
So this would fall under warranty work, so we'll work with the engineers. Adam, are you here? So we can definitely work with Holton and Mink and the company that did the work to make sure that they get that rectified, if it's a part of the...
It is.
Well, again, there's certain things I don't like about my driveway either, but there's a difference between deficient and...
No, but I mean, yeah.
But we definitely glad that you brought this. And this was all concerning the new project up at your house, right?
Yeah, all that part going down there.
Wonderful.
That area, yeah.
Excellent. Thanks Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Anybody else wishing to speak? More than welcome to step forward.
The good news is, I have a lot of questions about this tonight, so it's all regards to the restoration and the conflict that happened on the North Park Avenue, of course, where I live. My question is, what company actually did the restoration work? The lawn, like the lawn restoration? What was the company that did the work?
The lawn?
Yeah, like the lawns.
Turf establishment?
Who is it?
Turf establishment.
So there's, no, I don't have it in front of me either.
Okay.
So ultimately, Holtmeyer's the...
Okay. Okay, so they're who did the work, so who were they hired on? Was it hired by Holton and Mink as... Was it hired by the city? Who hired?
Holton, Holtmeyer?
Yeah.
They were hired by the city based on public bid.
Okay. So if, whose responsibility was it to ensure that the work is completed properly? So then it would be on the city to make sure that Holtmeyer has it completed, should be acceptable, or who does that fall upon?
How the process works. Ultimately, it's between the general contractor...
We represent the city in these matters, and we assist the city with that. So it's kind of a combination of...
So, I know several people from our neighborhood, so they've reached out to directly, Adam, to speak about how they are not happy with the way their yard looks compared to how it was previously. Is any steps or any action being taken to actually do anything about this?
Not now in the winter, no. You know, these concerns have been noted, and more specifically to the cement concerns we've had, I think we've got a list of about six or seven individuals. And our course of action with that is going to be in the springtime, Public Works, myself and Adam are gonna walk the whole project and look at all the concerned areas, and then also all the other areas, and then we'll link back up with Holtmeyer to see what type of warranty work needs to be done. But as far as what's being done now on the level of the dirt and the restoration, we're not gonna do anything within the time of spring.
Yeah, so at the same time, you're gonna assess the concrete, you're assessing the lawns, at the same time.
We can do that to see if it meets, you know, and quite honestly, it takes, you know, folks like you coming in with your displeasure about it to spark, you know, is this done within the specifications of how the engineering estimates came on, how everything was done?
Okay.
So we can do that in kind of twofold, look at the cement issues that are going on, as well as, hey, what's being done for, you know, restoration? If it's something as small as doing a little regrading and seeding, I mean, quite honestly, I'm just gonna probably have city staff do it.
Okay.
And we can work with you guys, very similar to the trees, to get that settled.
Okay. That's good to know, because it's just, I don't necessarily want to or enjoy being a fixture at all of the city council meetings, but, and I'm glad, thank you for listening, I was at the September one talking about this, but sometimes you just kind of wonder, and I knew we were going into the winter, but if things were happening, one city council member recommended, and out of kindness, but said, "Well, in the spring, just spray all the weeds, and then the grass will come back." And just to reiterate, if I spray all the weeds, there's no, there's not a lot of grass to come back, so I'm just gonna have a whole bunch of dirt there. Plus, I'm not really keen on spraying a bunch of toxic chemicals all over my yard that my daughter plays on all the time either. So it's just, it's just interesting, because I look at Lexington Avenue, which was done, what, four or five years previously, and I don't know if the same contractors or what was done, but it just, it looked like it was done beautifully. I mean, I walked around there all the time. The trees went in timely, the sidewalks looked great, the grass looked like residential grass, and I would just ask any of you city council members, when spring comes and the grass starts coming back, please, you can camp out on my yard. I will give you a lawn chair, and you walk around and you see how the yard looks. You can actually see the line of what was the grass there before and what was put in, in between the thistle and the lamb's ear and all of it, like stuff I didn't even know how to... It literally was restored like it was road ditches, not somebody's yard, and it's just really sad to see. So I'm happy to hear that when the spring comes, that not only the concrete, and then I hope that the city will communicate with us. I mean, I'm happy to call. Find out what's being done and what the protocol, and if things are gonna be reseeded or fixed. I'm happy to get my hose out and water, so.
Well, I think that's what it's gonna take, because we had the worst drought this summer, so that didn't help anything either.
Alright. Well, thanks for answering my list of questions.
Thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so again, thank you for coming. I know I said that a few months back, and we do need those issues keeping, coming in, otherwise, again, you know, nobody walks around the entire town checking on things, so it takes a group effort from the citizens as well. So thank you too for doing that. Alright, moving on to our department reports here, starting with the EDA, Dan.
I have nothing, Mr. Mayor, for an update on the EDA.
Plan zoning, Corey?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Not much new report, still no direction, request of direction given for the lot sale. We finished the house, or the season of the year with five new home permits. Other than that, I have nothing more to report.
You said five?
Yep. Five permits sold, three closed and moved into, one still vacant, and one not yet broken ground down.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Corey.
Liquor report, Pex?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our November 2022 sales were $90,822.68, and in November of 2021, they were $87,573.83. So we're up $3,248.85. Our year-to-date sales for 2022, $1,115,773.93. Our year-to-date expenses for 2022, $1,028,647.4. In November, we had a very successful month. We had a pepper tournament, a meat raffle, DJ, and football activities. In December, so far, we've had a potluck, a meat raffle, ugly Christmas sweater party, a band. This Friday, we have another band. Saturday is also our pepper tournament, we have a ham giveaway, and then just getting ready for the busy holiday season. For the second year, we're also doing Adopt a Senior, where we collect items and presents for the elderly and deliver them to the Carriage House, Horizon Place, and the nursing home. And also, Dan and I are working on a different layout for you guys for our reports, too, so we'll have that probably the first of the year, so. Different. Any questions?
How'd your count go?
What's that?
Your Howard count, how'd that go?
The what?
The hard count that you...
Oh, good, sorry, thank you. Yeah, yeah, we just finished that. That took a long time, but everything is good and up and running, and culture, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, yeah, so very excited about that.
Alright, questions for Becky? Alright, thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
Alright, police report, Chief Palsrud.
Alright, good evening, Mayor and Council. November 22, police activity report. You'll notice we're a little less busy last month. We only had 131 calls or incidents handled, that's down from our typical 170 average. 2,581 miles patrolled, ended up getting three arrests, one more, one criminal, and one traffic. Had a lot of bigger, more time-consuming calls last month, and like, a lot of vacations, so it's some unfilled shifts leading to the lower numbers, so. Compared to last year through the end of November, we're up 26% in calls and down 7% in miles patrolled. Again, those things kinda go hand in hand, so, yeah. A lot of stuff going on behind the scenes, but no, I won't bore everybody with all that, so.
We did pick up the squad, too?
Yep, we picked up our new squad car last Thursday up in Jordan. It's currently at Northern Safety up in Apple Valley, getting all the equipment put in. Should be done fairly quickly. We had to do some more work on our 2016 squad, and things getting old and worn out. We do have three officers going to some training at the end of month in Lee Sauer. They're putting on a training, it's called AVAS, Active Violence Active Shooter. It's kind of an all-day event, so that'll be really good training that's gonna be put on by Lee Sauer PD and the Sheriff's Office, along with the emergency management. We had two officers go to shop with a cop up at the Lee Sauer County Justice Center last week. Sheriff Mason said that was a pretty big success, so had a lot of happy kids up there. And obviously, we'll get to our new hiring here, and we're also backgrounding a seventh part-time officer, so we'll be fully staffed up until Sergeant Stefan's retirement here in a few weeks, so. Yeah.
Nice work, especially on the recruitment and hiring.
It's tough, there's just nobody out there, so.
Well, you got one good one.
Yeah, yeah. Stacking the whole town chief, who's present, they're dealing with the same problem, so. We got a chief's meeting this morning, and that was another thing that was brought up.
Alright, any questions for Derek? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Derek. Thank you, Derek.
Public Works, Mr. Amel?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few highlights over the last month is that we had one snow event, and it turned into a hauling situation downtown and all that, and then we had an ice situation, where we had a sand, and who knows what tomorrow or this end of the week's gonna bring here. And then the water tower, that's repaired, it's been done, I believe, completed on top by the telephone companies. And skating rink will be open by Christmas if the weather gets cold. Can't do it very good on 35 degrees, but we've attempted to, and trying to get in whole water, but not doing too well. That's all I have for the city council. Oh, page 20, excuse me, page 20. We've, since the last council meeting, we went searching for a company to chip our brush and get rid of it. We found a really good company out at Prior Lake, and we think, Public Works thinks it's a good price for that big brush pile, and they're gonna chip it and remove the chips for $6,000. They'll start probably next week, maybe. Take them about a day and a half to do it all.
That's for the current pile there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. We'll have to haul that silt or remains that we have from our pile, because they don't know what's in it.
The ash.
The ash, yeah. We'll continue to haul that to the landfill in Mankato, but they were thinking about taking it, but then they wanna make sure what's in it. We told them it's just ash, but they kind of declined that, so. We didn't wanna ruin a good thing here by getting them to chip our big pile. They were down, actually looked at it, too, so. We hope that next month, we'll be able to report that it's gone, in the green way, too.
So I think this is something really good, probably just given the proximity where that brush is, for the cities to move forward with having an entity come in and take that away, that we don't have to burn it and get those complaints, and, you know, Kurt and I talked about it, too, it's better for the environment as well doing it this way, so I think this is something we should, the council should move forward with and just consider doing in the fall of every year, getting rid of it. Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Alright, engineers report, Adam?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Hi, Adam.
Looking to seek the approval for the final pay application for the 2020 street and utility project. It's for $37,689.74. We received all the final paperwork from Holtmeyer Construction. With the approval of this, it'll start the two-year warranty period. We also have, we can still draw on their performance bond, you know, if they're non-responsive in that, so there's still some action that we have, even though we finalize the project, so.
What size performance bond do we have?
I...
200,000?
I'm not 100% sure on that.
After this payment is made, we don't have anything in retainage, just as it?
Correct. Yep, this releases all the retainage.
Have you looked at any of the concrete work that Ms. Schmidt did?
I have not. We were gonna look at that, like Dan said, we're gonna look at that in the spring. I know we got some complaints here later this fall, but what we don't wanna do is, is every time we get a complaint, then talk to the contractor, and then they're coming out and doing one at a time, you know, they're gonna wanna do them all at once, so that's why we wanted to wait till the spring. We'll let the issues show up, we'll go out, assess them, and then talk with the contractor.
Well, more importantly, there's nothing they can do right now, anyway.
Correct.
Can I ask a question? I mean, is it typically a good payment when you know there's issues? Is that just like protocol, or you're like, no, you're not getting your final payment, and so these issues are addressed?
Every issue is a little bit different.
Depends on what the issue is. If the entire street was buckling and infrastructure was busting, obviously, we wouldn't be approving this. What you guys are talking about, which are very important to you, but to the grand scheme of the project and what was bid to be done, those are cosmetic things that can be fixed and addressed through the warranty process.
And if we have a couple hundred thousand in performance bond, we give them notice to fix these warranty issues if they don't, and City hires a company to do it, and we assess that bond.
Did you want to look, I have the pictures here. Did you want to work with them just by three minutes?
It's not gonna matter, Kathy.
Okay.
You've included them in the letter, too, right?
Yeah.
So we will have those.
The important thing here is that Dan has them on file, and it's been shared with the city engineer, because ultimately, between those two, the city attorney and Public Works, they're the ones that are gonna go back to Holtmeyer and say, "This is what needs to be done," and then come up with whatever that game plan is.
Thanks for the explanation.
And I'd also like to point out, you know, the concrete subcontractor was a tally out of the center here, so I would think that they'd be pretty responsive, and, you know, they'll wanna, you know, it's hometown, so I think they'd wanna produce their best work there, too.
Based on your knowledge of the project, are you comfortable paying this?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? I'll make a motion to approve the final pay estimate number 14 to Holtmeyer in the amount of $37,689.74. Second. A motion made in second to approve the final payment for our 2020 project in the amount of $37,689.74. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move.
Great. That's all I had, unless you guys have anything else?
Just please keep in touch with Dan over the winter on the progress of the...
We've been keeping a list of it, too. He's been forwarding on to me, and he's been keeping one, too, so we'll have the list of anybody that's sent in a letter or complaint, and, you know, we'll make sure to specifically go out and look at their...
Yep, we gotta file it started, so.
And just so you guys know, I mean, this is nothing new. Every project's got something, and so we'll work to get it rectified. Alright, thanks, Adam, sorry. New business, Resolution Number 2022-T, as in Tom, certify the final 2023 tax levy and general fund budget, which can be located on page 26 in your packets.
These documents are basically the same documents that we had looked at for the proposed levy back in September. Through the expenditure and revenue budget worksheets, some allocations have been altered, but ultimately, every department and every fund, the bottom line dollar is the same, but, you know, if you're $1,000, you know, underestimate on here, and you were over on one spot, I just kind of moved it around to make the line items look a little bit better, but the overall product and the departments and funds are all the same, the same that we discussed back in September.
Any discussion?
So I also would like to note, too, that the tax rate is actually, has gone down. So the tax rate is a rate looked upon on the entire net tax capacity for the entire district with the city of the center, and we're at 65.69%. And last year, the tax rate was about 68.52%. So the, yeah, there's an increase in the overall levy for the city, but as far as the burden on the taxpayers, the tax rate is actually a lower number this year. And most of that is derived from the new valuations that came out for homeowner values.
Alright, if there's no more discussion, we do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2022-T.
Second.
A motion made in second to approve Resolution Number 2022-T, which is gonna set the property tax levy at $1,289,578, which is an increase 11.43%, and the 2023 final general budget dollar amount at $1,890,250. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. Moving on to the event that most of you are here for, and we're very excited to have, is to officially accept the recommendation and the hire of our new full-time police officer, Mr. Alex Chloe. You can find the recommendation from the hiring committee, which consists of myself, council member Holtmeyer, Police Chief Palsrud, Sergeant Stefan, and Administrator Greg, who conducted those interviews. Your motion to accept this?
I make a motion to accept the...
I'll second. A motion made in second to approve the recommendation of hiring new full-time police officer, Chloe. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So move. Congratulations, Alex. And with that... What we'll do is, we'll have Alex come up, I'll swear him in, and then after that, we'll kind of pause the meeting, so family, friends, stuff like that can take some pictures and all that fun stuff, okay? Alright, Alex, can you come forward, please?
I'll cheer you by first, Mayor. Can you grab your book?
This is the last one I'm gonna get to do, you're special. Alright, please raise your right hand, left hand on the Bible, please. Do you, Alexander Chloe, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of the state of Minnesota, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties to the office of full-time police officer within the city of Lee Center, in the county of Lee Sauer, in the state of Minnesota, to the best of your judgment, your abilities, so help you God.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
So what we'll do is, we'll just have a slight little recess here with the, with the meeting. If you guys wanna take pictures in front of the flag, whatever you wanna do, you can have everybody come up and do that. In April?
Yep.
Yep. That's where I recognize you from, I'm like, I know him from somewhere, and good to see you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Administrator. Administrator.
Yes, 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 yes.
All right, so thank you for that little pause there, um, we're gonna move on then, get into, uh, this area here. All right, so item A, reminder of the special meeting to conduct the interviews for tomorrow here at City Hall, and that'll be at six p.m. We'll be interviewing a couple of candidates for the Public Works, uh, position, uh, and, um, hopefully making a decision.
Yep, so, um, all the council members and mayor, you've got a Manella envelope, and that's got the applicants and the interview questions, so you can take that home tonight, um, review it, and then ask that you bring it back for tomorrow's special meeting, because we'll need that information within those packets.
Excellent. All right. Now, the next item wouldn't be complete, but I haven't put mine on, since I started this so many years ago. So, many, 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 many years ago, former Administrator Collins wore, uh, well, his nice sweater, and we all made fun of him and called it an ugly Christmas sweater. So that started a situation to where every December meeting, council, staff, were asked to come forward and, um, wear their, their, their best Christmas sweater that they had out there, and I thought it'd be fitting for me to, in my career as mayor, wear my Macho Man Randy Savage sweater. Um, with that being said. My glasses, can you see my glasses?
Do I have yours, though? I think I have yours, though. Here's mine.
We have, we have the same script. They're sitting right here.
Montgomery Police, she steals my glasses. All right, um, with that, um, we'll, we'll go ahead and finish the voting up after the council meeting, if that's all right with everybody. Um, but, um, I had to put this together, bear with me, uh, it's something that, uh, took me a little time to put together here, and, uh, wanted to address, uh, the city, so. As I sit here during my last meeting and the final term as mayor, I want to take a brief moment to thank all the people that have been so helpful during my tenure as an elected official with the city of Lee Center. Spring 2022, my wife and I, who has supported me over everything that I've done here, um, and along with my children, who have also circled and dealt with all the challenges that come with this position and, uh, my former council member position. It was at that time that I, uh, decided I enjoy a lot of aspects about this job, about the position, about the title, and about the, what, what is done here for all the citizens here in the city of Lee Center. And, uh, a lot of these things can be emotionally draining, they can be physically draining as well, um, but I, I can honestly say, after fourteen years, I, I am very happy for the people that I've worked with, and I, I feel that I've left the city of Lee Center in a much better place. Um, so there's a lot of things that are gonna be missed, but, um, I have a lot of confidence in Santa to take over, um, and, uh, all the newly elected officials that will also be part of this as well, um, with, uh, Dan Stefan being elected under the council, and then also, however, has decided to fill, uh, Mr. Harmeyer's remaining term. So you gotta bear with me, fourteen years, I've worked with a lot of people, and, uh, so as I go through this, I'm pretty sure I didn't miss anyone, but if I did miss someone, I do apologize for that. From the administration level, Chris Collins was, is like an uncle to me, along with Debbie Copit, who, along with her husband Ron, were my parents' best friends, and so, uh, grew up with them throughout my entire life. Tranny Moran, can't stand up.
You're one of the best, Josh.
Tara Neusbaum, Tammy Anderson, Donnie Hayden, uh, Corey Block with Public Works, so many different discussions that we've had, uh, and, and one of the most important ones, and he's no longer here, would be, uh, the late Gary Factor. Gary helped me so much early in my career, and he was a great influence, and somebody that I could always go to. With our EDA, Greg Traxler, Kevin Engel, Dennis Wolfle, who is also on the council, um, we, we, we did a lot with our EDA, considering what we had to deal with, um, we had a global pandemic, we kept and helped and offered assistance with all of our businesses, and we even seen some new businesses come in to the community, um, during that tenure. So many council members, uh, former Mayor Wetzel, who was twenty-five when he got elected mayor, I was thirty when I got elected to the city council, um, two young idiots thinking we could change the world, so. Council members Dorothy Dinwiddie, Emma Krennic, Jason Squires, Bradley Collins, Bob Emers, Gary Meilinger, and then, of course, our current council that I sit on right now with, um, uh, Mr. Nathan Hints, Ms. Jenny Weiers, Colin Scott, and the newly elected mayor, Mr. Harmeyer. Public Works, Kurt, Bob, Wally, um, Dan, Pat, you know, most people don't know Kurt, gave me my first job as a fifteen-year-old. Well, a lot for the city, one of the funnest jobs I ever had. Larry Schmidt, talked to him every Saturday. He always fills me in on everything that's going on with the recycling center, and usually what's going on in town, because he literally talks to every person. Um, the pool, you got Dorothy again, of course, all the different lifeguards that have served over the years. Um, at the muni, Jan Haddish, uh, Jan was a, a manager there and hired me as a part-time bartender when I first moved back to Lee Center. Nelson, Mike Nelson, Bradley Collins, and of course Becky, filling in those roles for all those important people, and, and all the, all the staff over the years, um, that, that have helped the city by working and representing the muni. Um, I can honestly say I love walking into that place and, and being greeted, and I, I know that it's not just because I'm mayor, it's, everybody's been greeted in a, in a very similar fashion. I'm almost done. Uh, Police Chief, former Chief Farr, Sergeant Stefan, current Chief Carl'swood, um, remember when we interviewed Derek for his police officer role, and, and we were talking, Bismarck, North Dakota, I said, well, don't judge everything out of North Dakota too bad, my son was born there, so. Officer Hints, former Officer Hints in Orlando, um, we, and now, of course, Alex, we're, we're gonna have a brand-new police department, and that can be scary for some, but it can be super exciting, too. I, I see the energy that, that these guys are bringing already with, with the community involvement and engagement, and it's, it's heartwarming to know that we have a police department that, that is willing to step in and do those types of little things, because that's really what it takes. Um, our emergency management director, Kevin Huber, a lot of people don't know a lot about Kevin working in the emergency manager role for the city, uh, I can tell you, um, Kevin was my rock when the pandemic hit. My family and I, we came home from a trip, we were the last ship to dock into the United States right before the pandemic. Any other ship after us was stuck out in port, and they weren't allowed back into the United States. I had thirty-five voice messages from Kevin Huber because my phone didn't work out at sea, and I called him back, and we spent hours talking about, what are we gonna do? And, gosh, Lerner, we got through it. So he, he does a great job, and it's been an integral part in, in dealing with that. Um, with the Lee Sore County Sheriff's Department, former Sheriff, um, Dave Teetz, and of course, Sheriff Mason, uh, love working with those guys and with the Sheriff's Office, uh, the T-Suit School District, um, former Superintendent Preisler, and then all the new administrators and athletic directors and the teachers, the elementary teachers and principals that used to invite me to come over and speak to their classes. You want to know what I'm gonna miss about this job the most, is that stuff. I'm gonna miss dealing and working with the community. Now, the good news is, is, you know, I'm not going anywhere, so I'll still be involved in some way, shape, or form. All the elected officials that I have ability to work with and network through the county, townships, and other municipalities, and, and this is something crucial to me, um, when I first got on, Lee Center did Lee Center stuff, Montgomery did Montgomery stuff, Lee Sore, Cleveland, the townships, everybody did their own thing. And I can say that as I sit here, we have now formed a group of collaboration between all these elected officials, and it's, it's so wonderful to know that I can call Mayor Issard over in Montgomery and ask a question, and vice versa, and we network, and we meet months a, once a month to go through and discuss things, so I, I think that's a very positive end here. All right, this will be the tough one. So, my family, my friends, my siblings, my parents, my wife, my son, my daughter. I'm sorry that I missed some things, but I know you know the reason was, because I was here doing it for our city. This is our home, so always will be our home. When Angie and I decided and found out we were gonna be parents, and we were gonna have a family, we moved back to this community because we love this community. And I'm very proud to be part of it, proud to represent, and thank you very much. All right. That went better than I thought. So, for the last time, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I make.
Go ahead. So moved. Motion made to adjourn and seconded, alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.